Okay, okay. How about you Eric? What are you gonna name yourself, my dear?
Just me.
Big Kahuna? It's gotta be something about ice sailing, my dear. What's, what's the, who's the best ice sailor? What do you, what is, what's the name for that? Kahuna surfer.
Uh, that would be the world champion, which I definitely am not.
Okay.
So we're going to give Curtis a couple more minutes or plow on ahead without him?
I can text him.
Eric, can I ask you a question while we're waiting for Kurt?
Absolutely, ask away.
I did, well, first of all, what do I look like? Is, do I have just like a blank gray icons on your screens? Do I have a screen?
No, it's just a picture of a telephone.
Yeah, okay, that's me. Alright, well, I, this is a big step for me, so next time I'll get the visual going too. Last time was on my wife's computer, she's working from home, so I was able to use that, but not tonight, I'm trying the iPhone. But anyways, no, quick question, the chip seal is looking good. Uh, there's, there's uh, just some concerns I had, I wish we had the time and the manpower to fix certain big depressions in the road before we chip sealed them. They're, uh, overall, a lot of, you know, ninety percent of the roads are in good shape, needed just the chip seal, but uh, some spots were depressed, I measured like a dip of at least four inches. So what we're gonna see this winter is we're gonna see that pocket still holding water even better, because it's, the cracks aren't letting the water through now. So, I wish we had the time to do some re-cert, re, uh, re-leveling with some hot mix in certain specific locations before we chip sealed.
Yep, that would have been nice, um, but, I mean, you know, I got, by my estimation right now, I've got about a half million dollars in shimming I need to do, and I got about seventy-five thousand dollars to do it. So, I'm not gonna do most of what I wanted to do for shimming. Um, obviously, we passed on a lot of roads because they required too much shimming before we could, uh, chip seal. You know, we chip sealed basically everything we could get away without doing, and you're right, there are some depressions. Um, it's far from perfect, um, you know.
Yeah, we could always, we could, we, we could always come back and do it in a future year if that can, if these areas, little areas continue to be problems, and they will. Uh, but it would have been just nice to do, to spend a week going around with this, with us, with a, a box, a drag box, and, and filling in the severe depressions in spots that have now been chip sealed, but we could always fix it in years come future, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is our costs, our day rate costs, you know, are somewhere around five thousand bucks plus trucking, plus asphalt at around seventy bucks a ton. So, I mean, you know, like I said, I, I think I've got more than a half a million dollars of shimming I'd like to be able to do in town, but I don't even have a fifth of that, you know, in actual money.
Do, do we, do we even still have a drag box to put in the back of a dump truck?
No, we do not.
Oh, well, that, there you go, we can't, we can't do it anyways then.
Oh, we're not doing it, no, we can't, we don't have a drag box, number one, we don't have a roller that works, number two.
Oh, right, right, okay, alright.
You know, so, yeah, we're pretty limited in what we can do in that, we're, unfortunately, we're stuck with subbing all of that out. What we are gonna try this fall for potholes is something called the Dura Patcher. Um, I'm gonna try to rent one for a month. So basically, you just buy the liquid asphalt emulsion and you fill the back of the, the dump truck up with stone, and the stone pours out on little conveyor belt, it gets mixed right on the spot with the emulsion, you know, and stuffed into the, into the potholes. So it seems to be a good way to make a pretty permanent pothole repair, um, equivalent to doing it with hot mix. Um, you end up with a little more asphalt in it and a little less aggregate, but you can do it fast, so you have the ability to do a lot in a short time.
Yeah, mo-most of them develop in February and March, as you probably know.
Yeah, but you know what, we've got so many potholes to fill now, I'm not even worried about new potholes, I'm worried about the potholes that already exist.
Right, okay, oh, you're talking about real small patching, okay, yeah, I got you. Yeah, okay.
All right.
Kurt here yet?
Kurt didn't, Kurt didn't respond to my text, so I, I think we need to get going.
Let's call to order without Curtis.
Okay.
That's at seven eleven?
Seven eleven.
And that's where Kurt is.
And so, Eric. So Louise, why are you hiding from us?
Why, you wanna see me?
It's nice.
Alright. Hi.
Hey, we, we harassed Ed so much. Wow.
That's great.
So we called to order at seven eleven, um, I've got the roll and public comment. Uh, additions or changes to the agenda?
Great, it's.
That bird was perfect.
Yeah.
This is good, without Adrian, we'll move right along here. So, uh, approval of minutes for the prior meeting, Shannon.
I move to approve the minutes. A second ordered by you to, of the prior meeting.
So Shannon.
We seconded.
I'll second it.
Do we have any discussion?
Ooh, this is going well, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. I love those birds. Okay, uh, project update discussion, this was from Curtis. So, I don't know who's gonna be Kurt's proxy, but uh, I guess this is you, Eric, what's, what's been going on?
Okay, so, I'm from the fire department front, the fire department, uh, sometime in July, will receive their new fire truck, they have apparently done a virtual walkthrough tour of the truck before it left the factory. It's going to someplace in New Haven for, I don't know, like, a few weeks of additional work and stuff being installed, and then they're supposed to have that sometime in July. Um, and I'm gonna sign a big fat check for, I think, around four hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and we're gonna have a shiny new fire truck.
This is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's it.
We had on our minutes report that this was supposed to come in June one, did I get that date wrong?
Uh, I think it came into New Haven on June one.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're not gonna have it for, we'll have it fairly soon though.
Okay.
Um, and we'll make Kurt buy us all, you know, invite us all to a, to a party where we're gonna celebrate the new truck. Um, and there'll be fireworks, you know, maybe a band, that's probably not, but you never know.
We approved four twenty for it, if you're only spending four twelve, that's, that's.
That's true, that's true, we should, we could have a hell of a party for eight grand. Yeah, so, uh, that is on its way, we also, as CIP had approved the purchase of the UTV for the fire department, uh, I signed a purchase order for that yesterday or the day before. So, that is, uh, it will be delivered hopefully in a couple weeks, they gotta put the meddy insert in the back, and, but it looks like that should be delivered in roughly, you know, the same timeframe, within the next month. So, and then the fire department's gonna end up working for a while to install, because they still gotta install radios, and they gotta do a bunch of the work, they've opted to do a lot of the work themselves as opposed to, uh, to farming it out. So that's it for the, uh, fire department. Um, I, there's a couple other things, we just got in the blower for the roadside mower that has arrived, and we got, CIP approved the purchase of the material hoist for the loader. So we've got that, and that's been put to work pretty extensively in the rebuilding the transfer station walls. Um, those are it for what's come in for public works, there, the work on the transfer station is ongoing. It's coming reasonably well, um, we, you know, uh, most of the electrical conduit is in, a lot of the electrical work, basically, one of the things we realized, we realized a couple things when we started that project. The, the first is, CIP approved money for a shed and some electrical work, and then they separately approved money to do the walls. Um, so we didn't approve enough money to do all concrete walls, we did one side with a conventional block, and we did the others, we're gonna do the other, we're doing the other side now with more of a retaining wall style block. Um, advantages and disadvantages to both, um, we had some real problems with the first side that we did, that the blocks were poured pretty unevenly, um, even though we paid a fair amount of money for them, and we specified new pour, air entrained, you know, high strength concrete, and we got that, but we didn't get, you know, square and level blocks. So we're redoing it with a slightly different type of block for the other side, that part of it's going well. Um, where we are, we're way over budget on a couple things. The first is that we are slightly changing the configuration, the layout of that side, and we're basically, what we're doing is we're setting the facility up so at some point in the future, we can add a fourth compactor if we need to. And there are some definite advantages to that, oh, seems like we lost somebody, oh well. Louise dropped out. Um, so, but that's requiring us to pour, to extend one of the pads, concrete pads that the compactors are on. Um, so we're gonna run some expenses for that. The other big expense is, we made a decision to abandon what we were using, we had been using static phase converters to produce the three-phase electricity, and we've been struggling with that for a long time. Basically, what happened is we used to have a rotary phase converter in there, and it broke, and instead of just replacing it, um, Bob took the cheapest solution that was possible, which was put in these little static phase converters, one for each machine. The problem being, they only produce essentially two-thirds of their rated power when they're running, um, and they've caused us a bunch of failures with the compactors. So, we're, we're basically redoing the electrical system, and, and that's fairly expensive. Um, but we have enough money in the contingency budget to do it, um, so we're just kinda rolling with it.
Eric, are you going, are you going to be putting, replacing them with rotaries so that you can?
Yeah, so, so what we're doing is, we're putting in one large enough rotary phase converter that is capable of running two compactors at a time. Um, so it's a fairly large unit, and what we did is, we're basically, essentially what we're doing is, we're starting from the service drop, and we're replacing everything from the service drop, new meter, new main service panel, rotary phase, three-phase converter, three-phase panel right next to it, poured on a concrete pad, and then underground trenching, we got rid of the overhead wire, we're going all underground, and part of the reason we swapped out the overhead wire, or we got rid of that, is we had so many trees we had to take down that have overgrown the wires, that we were looking at like a six thousand dollar bill for tree trimming, you know, because we had to cut around the wires and we had to bring somebody in with a bucket to do it. So in the end, we saved ourselves some money on that part by just eliminating everything overhead, and we're, we're putting everything in conduit, which will be a lot safer. Um, and it will be all run back to the transfer station attendance booth, there will be low voltage wiring to that. So all the controls for the three-phase converter will be in the attendance booth, so he can turn it on and turn it off in the, in the evening right from the booth. You know, and then we, we got rid of the old building, the old little crappy building, and we've got a new prefab one that's, will be arriving as soon as the pad's ready for it. So, I would say that project is coming along very well. Um, I was unhappy that we had as much mission creep, um, you know, as we did, and there could have even been a lot more mission creep. I mean, there's still plenty of other stuff to replace too. But, what, at the end of the day, what we need to do is have functional compactors that work every time you hit the little button, and we've, we've really been struggling with that for the past year.
Agreed, Eric, Eric, quick question on that, has, has Jerry Hardisty helped you with any of the engineering on that? Sounds, with the mission creep, is, is a lot of important documentation, for instance, the location of the underground power feed. Um, has a site plan been made, when I worked there, there was, there wasn't even a site plan at all, uh, has any, any drawings been made of this?
So, we have schematic drawings from the electrician.
Hold on one sec, Eric, before you continue, Louise is saying she can't get back in, are you, as the administrator, can you see if she's trying to, trying to get back in and she can't? She just texted me.
Um, I'm certainly not blocking her from getting in, um, there's nothing on my end that prevents her from getting in.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Yep, no worries.
Alright, so my, my only advice is to try to get, you know, as much of this documented, so in the future, you know, ten, twenty years from now, we know where everything is, and what it's been built with.
Right, right, so, so we have fairly careful documentation on like, you're basically where we're running the conduits, you know, and all the wiring schematics for it, um, so we have that, um, you know, we have the block documentation for what we're using for blocks. You know, we could do better, no question, it would have been nice to start with, you know, a fully surveyed piece, um, you know, but we did not, there were a couple really interesting things we discovered when we started digging. The first is they never, we always wondered why the moisture never really drained from under, you know, the moisture that went through the road didn't drain, and that was because, when they had the original, when it was still just the, just the actual dump, that was a paved road underneath, and they never took out the road, they just piled more gravel on top to create the grade and paved another road. So you dig down and you hit a second road underneath the first road, which is kind of unfortunate, because that, you know, and by putting gravel over it, you do a great job of preserving it, because it doesn't get sunlight. Um, so now you put like a waterproof barrier right in the middle of this thing, so it's.
Yeah, yeah, the impervious later, so the water can't, the water can't percolate down into the groundwater it belongs, yeah.
Right, so, you know, but, I mean, what are you gonna do, you know, there's no, there's no possible way we can dig the whole thing out. Um, there's some pretty serious constraints with it.
I had made some sketches for Joe, uh, a couple years ago, he needed to know what was there, and I just, I, I, me and Dave pulled dimensions on the existing walls, and we made a schematic drawing of, to, to be able to, we're studying whether to use larger dumpsters or not. We're pretty much confined to the dumpsters we're using because of the wall configuration, uh, and if we're just replacing in kind, that's fine too, we're just gonna keep the same sized dumpsters. I mean, there's a lot to consider. Also, I had told Joe about a seminar, I went to the DEEP, where someday, they may require us to put a roof over those dumpsters. So, you know, uh, we could just do a pole structure if we have to in the future, which means we might have to drill some telephone poles into the ground. But, uh, again, documentation, you need to know where that, those cables, where that electrical cables are, so we're not drilling into cables in the future.
Yeah.
So Eric, where, you said we're over budget on that, so, and you said money came from, from where?
Yeah, so, so we're gonna take the excess money out of contingency. Um, so, to put in perspective, the electrical work alone was about thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's what accounts for the difference. You know, the rotary phase converter itself is, was quite a bit, that was over, that was around five thousand just for that. You know, new main service panel, new meter socket, the original service drop was really in rough shape. Um, so we've kinda just elected to, to practically start over from the pole on. Um, it sucks that we have to do it, but there wasn't enough there to, to really, you know, everything we looked at, the main service panel had some pretty serious rust issues, so you were gonna replace that. You know, the meter socket had some problems, so we were gonna replace that. The service drop, they never put in conduit, it was just bare cable, you know, and the cable was all cracked and chacked. So it's like, you know, every time you go back one step, you're like, oh, I guess that's gotta come out too. So hopefully, we end up with a lasting solution, and we're not screwing around with this thing. You know, but.
Yeah, it's good, it's good we went underground, there's nothing else for power for, for storms, for ice storms and things.
And so is that why the, the compactors would go out every once in a while, they just, the motors weren't getting enough electricity?
That was a big part of it, yep, and then we'd blow the, you know, blow the breaker on the static phase converter. Um, you know, and after it cooled down, sometimes it would start again, you know, sometimes it wouldn't, um, yeah. But, you know, the thing is, is that if you're running a three-phase system, the static converters really only drive the third phase the instant of the starting current, and the rest of the time, they're basically, they're driving off a two, you know, two legs, not three. You know, and that's, that's a third of your power that's, that's missing. So you're running a ten-horse compactor at six and a half, you know, horse. So, you know, it doesn't take much of a, much of a jam or much, you know, in the way before that thing just locks up and, you know, won't go anywhere.
Okay, well, I'm glad we're getting it done right after all these years.
Yeah, sounds like you're doing it right, you're doing it right, Eric.
I, I'm trying, I'm trying, um, we are looking at, uh, you know, that's pretty much it for there. Um, we, I still wanna consider at some point figuring out how we can do a dockless split system for the town hall. You know, the window air conditioners we have are really marginal for this space, um, and they're really inefficient. Um, so given what we're spending, you know, on electricity, I think long term, we need to come up with some kind of reasonable solution for this building. You know, but I, I don't know that I'm gonna get to that this year. Um, if I do, I would probably plan on tapping low SIP money to do it, um, because one of the things I did was I looked back through all the, the town's previous low SIP projects.
Hold on, Ed just dropped off, and he'll probably wanna hear this, and Louise can't get in. So she's dropped out of the meeting, I don't know what her issue, she said she's having buffering issues. Every time she tries to get in, it, it buffers.
Yeah, I saw she, it looked like she was on a pretty low bandwidth connection, she could probably just call in on her phone, you know, and do audio only.
Yeah, it's probably better for her to do audio only if she's running low, whether on computer or phone.
I can tell you at my house, if I'm, you know, I can't do video, I can call in, but, you know, it kicks me out all the time, because I don't have enough bandwidth to, to really do it. We'll wait a couple minutes and see whether Ed can get back on.
I'm glad you're getting the, uh, the transfer station done right, it'd be nice to have that, to have that up and running the way it should. I wondered why those things seem to break down all the time, and.
Yeah.
Paying the price of Bob's cheapness, the high cost of low prices.
You got it. Doesn't matter what you can do, you can always half-ass it, Fred.
Yeah. Why pay a little now when you can pay a lot later?
You know, some things just make me crazy, like, if you ever drove out to Cone Road, most of Cone Road was paved like eight, you know, eight years ago, seven years ago. That road needs to be ground up and done over, I mean, it, I hate to say it, but it really needs kind of a complete do-over, which is crazy for an eight-year-old road, you know, but they poured it on top of a gravel road, they never got the subways right, they never got the drains right. Bob wanted to pave it, and they paved it, you know, and. Yep.
Wow. Well, the bitterness of low quality lingers long after the, uh, the sweet taste of low prices recede.
I know.
Eric, were you gonna give us an update, my dear, on what's going on with the, um, the new website?
Yep, um.
Okay, nope, you can wait on that. I don't wanna, yep, wait, I asked Louise to try audio only, so we have a quorum. I don't, I don't know if I have Ed's.
What is quorum for us?
Four, I think.
So now we're at two, because Eric's not on our.
Right.
Part of us.
Is it four?
I don't know.
I never heard back from Kurt.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, it's supposed to be a seven-member board, but if only three are, or only six are appointed, yeah, I guess quorum would still be four. It can't be half.
Alrighty.
Well, I could go downstairs and Fred and I could talk to you, Eric. The only thing I have for Ed Zerizli is a phone number, uh, an email, do you have a phone number for him, Eric?
Let me check, actually, I might have. Yep, I'll call him.
Yeah, can you give it to us?
Sure, as soon as I, I'm done calling him.
Okay.
I have a number for Ed.
What's his number, honey? Is it a home or work number or cell number?
I think it's a cell, four nine, four nine eight, ten eighty-four.
Hold on. Four nine eight, ten eighty-four?
Hey Ed, it's Eric, just poking you and seeing whether, uh, you kinda dropped off real quick, thought you probably dropped the call. I'm wondering if you're trying to get back on, uh, only via phone, give me a call back or, or not, thanks, bye. Hey, oh, got it. Oh. Okay. Okay, cool, you might be able to get on audio only, and that might help. Okay, yep, cheers. Uh, he's trying to get back on even as we speak.
Well, we still need Louise, we need four. We need four board members, so, without, without Louise, we can't, this is not official.
Well, it was official when we started.
Is that you, Louise, or is that Ed?
I did, yeah.
That's Louise.
Alright, okay, so we dropped Ed too, we're trying to get Ed back so we have quorum and we can, uh, have an official meeting.
Yeah, there's network issues going on, I think.
Oh, there's CD.
Kurt's there.
Alright, well, now we're official at least.
Surprise, surprise.
Hey Curtis, good to see you.
You're muted, Kurt.
Sorry I'm late. Had to take the grandson home and got tied up.
Understood.
It was a, it was a trying day, trust me. And all I'll say is he got into a black permanent magic marker.
Nice.
And decided to, you know, to join the crew of Black Lives Matter, so.
Excellent.
That's all I can say.
So if you save pictures, you could blackmail them later on in life?
I have pictures, trust me. I had to send them to his mother.
Yeah, so when he runs for public office later, this blackface mother is gonna come back to haunt him.
He had black face, he had black legs, he had black hands, arms. Oh my lord. Anyways, that's all I got.
All right, Kurt, well, thank you for joining us. We were doing an update, Eric, at your request.
Yeah.
Doing a project update. Again, I guess you'll get the minutes when I do that. I don't, I don't wanna ask Eric to go through all that stuff.
Right, and I know exactly what Eric's doing and it's, it looks like it's coming out pretty good, so.
So far, so good.
Yeah.
So please, carry on, Mr. Anderson.
So Shannon asked a question about what was happening with the town's website. So the town's website, new website, is about probably 80%, 85% finished. We're not ready to share links with you yet for the updated site, but that should be within a couple of weeks. We were originally looking at July 8th to go live with the cut over to the new site. I suspect we're not gonna make that. We had about a month, month and a half delay from Civic. I'm not sure exactly why, you know, our, our program manager there was, you know, I think stringing us along. And we finally got fed up with it and, you know, bitched enough and they gave us a new project lead. And now things are, you know, are banging right along. So we're doing a lot better with that. I think we, you know, at some point in July, we will have the new website up and running and fully functional, which would be really good. We also are a long way through our IT upgrade. We've suffered some pretty serious delays with that because South Windsor has, you know, we had expected to get support from a whole series of South Windsor staff for that, from their IT department. And South Windsor has said all their IT people that work onsite in South Windsor can only work onsite in South Windsor. And the, the one or two people they have that were servicing other towns, they're basically kept away from South Windsor. So we really, we have a lot less support right now for the upgrades than we have. But we're moving along. We got the new server in, it's functional. We got rid of our oldest server. The intermediate-aged server is now just gonna be relegated to backup duties. You know, we're finally, for the first time ever, doing legitimate daily backups of all our critical data, all our data period. You know, and it's a RAID, I'm not an IT guy, it's a RAID something, something. So it's the primary data, a complete backup, a complete isolated backup of the backup, is how I would describe it. That's not accessible other than through a password, so it's, it's not at all accessible to the outside. The next two things we have to do is transition the town to Office 365 for our email server, because as most of you know who've tried to get in touch with us, our email has been just absurdly bad the last couple of months. We're also really struggling with keeping our existing website functional. Site 5, our website host, is just, we've been paying a lot of money to an outside web development company to just patch our site together every time it breaks. So we're really looking forward to having the new site up and fully functioning and getting rid of Site 5 completely. And then the last part of that project is going slower and that is the transition to fiber. So we had a meeting with the big shots at CEN, which is the Connecticut Education Network. And they own all the fiber infrastructure that goes by here. And they, so there's basically a hub in the school. And what we need to do is we need to get, and we have a fiber connection that goes from the town hall to somewhere in the school. It sounds like the library, at least that's what's written on ours. And somehow, we need to get that fiber connection complete through to CEN's hub that's in the school, because that hub has plenty of capacity. And so essentially, what we're looking at is running fiber through the school, but we won't interface directly with the school's system. So it will just go through the school and try to figure out how to do that. Now, I'm kind of hoping, but shoot.
Question, Eric, when and where did we run the fiber optic underground from town hall to the school?
The answer is, I have no idea. It is, it definitely exists. It comes into the building and we use it, the connection between the town hall and the school for the financial software is run through that fiber. The only thing currently run through the fiber is the financial software, because the Phoenix system is installed on a server in the school. But what's unknown is, so where the fiber comes into the building, it says clearly that it's connected to the school library. But we don't know where in the school library and we're gonna have to do some.
Well, there's, there's a, there are two, Eric, there's the library, it's probably not in the library, but there's the office of the librarian. And right next to the library and that office is the whole computer lab. So I would imagine that the server is right there. In, it may look like it's library, but it's really the computer lab or the librarian's actual office.
Right, and if we are lucky, and we, as in the town, is lucky. And because if, if you look at where the CEN comes into the building, it's at the complete upper level opposite end. And it's too long a run for you to have run CAT 5. So there's a good chance that the school is already running fiber from CEN down to that location. And if they are and you have a spare pair, then it's essentially free. And then CEN just makes the, assigns that to a router. You know, so we're not, you know, we're not scamming off the, the school system. We're gonna pay for the CEN directly, we'll pay them directly. We're just transmitting through the fiber through the school to get there. That's the plan anyway. I know at one point, the town was trying to say, well, we don't need our own connection. We'll just tie into the school and use theirs. And that was never gonna fly. CEN was never going to approve that. But the good news from our perspective is the cost for CEN is the same monthly cost basically as our cost for, that we're paying right now for cable. And it's somewhere around 50 times greater bandwidth and much greater in the afternoons when the load is heavy. Because especially right now during COVID, I mean, the bandwidth, first thing in the morning, you know, is pretty good here, but by late afternoon, it's, you know, it's wicked slow. So, so that project, I think, will go. We just have to coordinate with the, the IT people. And we've started the conversation with, you know, the, the school's IT people. You know, and kept kind of Laura in the loop on that, about what's going on.
Charles DeCustina-Frazier, is that who you're speaking with?
No, we're talking to Tom Fleck, the consultant, the guys you use for.
ESGON?
ESGON. So, and so it's either gonna be really simple and really cheap or we're gonna end up running somehow, bringing contractor in to run fiber the full length of the building to do a direct connection. And I'm hoping it's not the latter, because that's a pain in the butt. But, you know, if we have to, we have to. We, you know, we looked at both options, either going through the fire department, you know, or trying to go directly outside. But those are both, you know, $16,000 to $20,000 propositions. Going through the school is, you know, should be, you know, should be pretty low cost. But, you know, obviously, we gotta get the school to agree to it. And we gotta make sure, you know, your IT people understand, you know, where it has to go and what has to happen. So it's either gonna be really inexpensive, because you already had the building rewired and there's a spare pair that we can tap, or there isn't, in which case, we're running wire. So the answer is, I don't know. Working on it.
Anything else?
No, there's, we got the sprinkler system fixed finally for the field.
Started running, yeah.
So the field is up and running finally. That was harder than it's had to be. We're having a, we had a huge problem with getting sand into the filtration system to the point where the way it was rigged up to this point, somebody had to go up there every single day, remove the filter, clean the filter, reinstall it. So that, that was kind of a problem. We put in a specific sand trap slash sand filtration system and a solenoid so that it cleans itself, you know, a couple of times a day. So, so far, that seems to be working flawlessly. Seems like we finally may have fixed that. We've gone after a couple other small electrical problems. We had some issues at the museum, which we corrected, and we're putting in a couple exterior motion sensor floods for the parking area, just for a little security. And so when people are coming back from the rail trail late, there's some illumination there. You know, we're still having some other little mechanical problems, but nothing big enough to really trip into CIP territory. And, you know, I don't, we don't really have enough information to say too much about other things. I should have back in, within the next 10 days, kind of a comprehensive report on all the culverts in town. And we can start making, you know, educated guesses or educated decisions about what ones, you know, what the priority for a culvert replacement has to be. And, you know, how many of them are really critical and how many we can put off. The only other thing is, we're moving along with the Bunker Hill Bridge project. I spoke to the engineer that's assigned to us, the consulting engineer. So far, that's going pretty well. They're just waiting on final federal approval. So basically, once we get the, a project number, right now, we're like 001 TBD. And when it goes from, you know, to be determined to an actual project number, that means it's fully funded at the federal level. They started the environmental surveys, the wetlands flagging. The next big thing up will be to do core samples. You know, and basically, we'll have to close one lane at a time while they do core samples. You know, but that, that project's proceeding. So, so it looks like we're far enough into the process. And I believe that bridge, we saw them doing bridge inspections, you know, fairly recently, and we haven't gotten any bad news. So it doesn't seem like this year, they're going to close that bridge. So it seems like we'll get to the construction phase. And so the only bridge closure will be during actual construction. And we won't be stuck with an initial bridge closure before that happens. That's all I know about bridges at this point.
Okay, so Eric, by bridge closure, you mean involuntary bridge closure? Because they would say it's unsafe and you have to close it now?
Yeah, they, the inspector last year hinted that that was a legitimate possibility, because the bridge rating went down to three out of 10. You know, and to put it in perspective, it's, they're eligible for funding when they get to be a six. I mean, if it was a spanned bridge and it was, had a structural rating of three, it would have already been closed. But because culvert-type bridges have more redundancy and the failures tend to be less catastrophic, they're allowed to be pushed down farther down the spectrum before they start putting weight limits. And even, they actually wouldn't close it, but they would put a low enough weight limit on it that we wouldn't drive buses and we wouldn't drive fire trucks over it. So we really wanna get it done before we get to that point. And one of your old students, Ed, is the guy running.
Chris the video.
Yeah, Chris the video is running the project.
Yep, it's good.
All right, that's all for our updates. Our next, our next agenda item is public discussion.
I have an update, Fred.
Oh, well, please.
Coming on late. The fire tanker will be leaving South Dakota tomorrow en route to Connecticut, should arrive the dealership early next week. And we're hoping to have it in town here, on or before next Wednesday. We're scheduled to have the new radios installed and things like that here at the station, so.
I thought it was going to New Haven first.
It's going to North Haven.
North Haven?
Yep.
Okay.
They, they're talking to get it here from South Dakota, like two and a half to three days max. So it leaves tomorrow, it should be in here by Monday, so.
Can they just turn the lights on and drive really fast?
Things govern for 50 miles an hour, so you don't really wanna be the driver pounding that thing for, from South Dakota to Connecticut. I'm sorry, I wouldn't want.
Did they drive it or did they trailer it in?
No, they drive it.
Oh, okay.
It's a good break-in period for it anyways. Most fire apparatuses, unless you specifically want it trailered in, are all delivered, you know, on their own, though. So it's, it's good break-in for the, for the unit. Chief Mike is in negotiations with, there's a DH Marvin and Sons in Colchester for a John Deere UTV. Seems to be, he said it's gonna be well, well within the budget. And he's also talking to Connecticut Trailer in Bolton for the trailer, the trailer. They've had some, they got some pretty good sales going on right now for the size trailer that's needed. So once he, once he confirms that, you know, we'll be, we'll be talking to town hall.
Yeah, Kurt, I've already signed the purchase order to DH Marvin for the, for the UTV and for the insert. So that's already in the, in the pipes they have.
Why didn't the fire chief tell me that?
I don't know.
I will take it up with him when I see him.
And Wally signed the purchase order, so.
Oh, there's another one. Why didn't Wally tell me that?
I don't know why they gave you the mushroom free.
Oh my lord, okay, that's.
Next thing you know, Kurt, your key's not gonna work in the door anymore.
Yeah, when that happens, then I guess I'm really retired. That's really all I had to report as far as, you know, the, the items that, the capital items that we're working on. You know, we're, we're happy, it's been a, been close to a year to get this, this truck finally, so. And we're all set to go once it does arrive here for training and outfitting and so on and so forth, so. Get it serviced as soon as possible, hopefully on or before July 1st, if everything goes right, so.
Excellent. And we said you were gonna throw a big party, a big new truck party. And you were gonna light all of CIP.
Not with COVID-19, sorry. That's up, that's up to Chief Mike anyways, and the president, Mr. Gustinian. They do, they handle all of the, all of the good welfare for the department, so.
I say we light a huge bonfire on the beach and have the tanker pump the water up and put it, put the bonfire out.
We can do that, we can do that, no problem. No problem, Eddie, you know that.
All right.
So that's, that's basically all I had, Fred, on that.
Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Yep.
Any other project update? So that moves us to public comment. Adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Shannon moves to adjourn.
Second.
7:55.
This might be a record for us. This might be a record for us.
Kurt, just so you know, I announced at the beginning of the meeting, Adrian's father-in-law has pneumonia. Um, he had a stroke last week and they were to bring him to a rehab facility this, today, but he developed pneumonia last night, so that's why Adrian's not with us, and
Understand.
You can keep him in your thoughts.
Will do, thank you.
Father or father-in-law?
Father-in-law.
Okay, all right, thank, thanks Shannon, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming out. I'll, I'll be in touch before the next meeting. Any expectations for next time around? So Eric, you might have some stuff for us for the bridge culverts.
Um, I, I'll probably have a reasonable report for you for the culverts and we can talk about, you know, what's possible to fund and what's not possible to fund. You know, all that's gonna be money dependent. Yeah, that, that'll be the big things I, I come back to you with. You know, roadwork is proceeding. And we'll go from there.
Okay, anything new in the pipeline from the firehouse, Kurt?
Not really. We're very happy, you know, with the, the town has treated us well in the last, the last few years, so.
Yeah, you don't know.
We have nothing, uh, really, really, uh, pending.
That's good.
Not for, not for quite some time, so we can build that, uh, fund up and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Christmas in July, Kurt, Christmas in July.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Anything from the school, Shannon? No?
We're just dealing with, as, as everybody knows, um, the financial software. Between the town and the school and dividing, deciding on what we're gonna do for financial software, so that needs to be determined.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I apologize, I didn't get any meeting notice for that. Adrian asked me afterward why I wasn't on the meeting and I'm like, I really have no idea.
You weren't supposed to be on the meeting. It was supposed to be a meeting between Jeff, Adrian, Chris Bernard and my to talk about the, to talk about the creation of a financial department. And I had asked Jeff to set up a Zoom meeting with Amanda for the four of us. Yeah, you weren't involved, you weren't supposed to be involved in that, my dear. That was the committee that we created after the joint Board of Select and Board of Education meeting.
Okay, and, and that's fine. Adrian just asked me why I wasn't at the meeting and I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about.
You weren't supposed to be.
Okay, that's good. That's good, then I don't feel bad for blowing you off.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody.
All right.
Okay.
Bye.
You will.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep.